Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting, ordinary council meeting, Debenhart City Council. It is Monday the 22nd of February and it's by thirty. Councilite knowledge and pay respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land. All persons in attendance are advised that it is council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. I want to remind that we are last threatening this meeting. Item one is apologies, and we have a full complement of councils, so there aren't any apologies. Item two is declarations of interest. I would ask town councillors if there's any declarations of any item of interest, any item in this agenda. Shall you let me know then, please?
Yes, Mayor. Item seven point one.
Thank you.
And for me, Mayor, seems like I can get my screen to clear up. Item four point one.
Item four point one, thank you, Council Murphy. Are there any others? Thank you. Item three point one is three point one point one is confirmation of previous minutes of the meeting on the twenty fifth of January. Can I have a move of the recommendation, please?
So moved.
That's Hollister.
Second.
Councilor Ennis, Councilor Hollister, anything to add?
Nothing further to add, it's all been answered.
Councilor Ennis.
Nothing further.
Any other comments, questions? Councilor Hollister to close.
Senator closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
And any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item three point two is public question time, and item three point two point one is responses to questions raised at prior meetings. Do I have a move of that recommendation, please? So, Councilor Millburn, thank you. Do I have a second, then?
Seconded.
Councilor Hollister, Councilor Millburn, do you have any procedure? Thank you. Councilor Hollister.
Nothing to add.
Any comments, questions? Councilor Millburn to close. Consider it closed. Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item three point two point two is questions unnoticed from the public. I have a recommendation down page seven. Do I have a move, please?
So moved.
Council Perry, thank you. Do I have a second, then?
You do, Mayor.
Councilor Laicock, thank you. Council Perry, anything to add?
Question answered adequately, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Laicock.
Nothing further to add?
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Council Perry to close.
Consider closed.
I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item three point two point three is questions without notice from the public, with the opportunity from the Minister of Education to step forward to the microphone and ask a question. None? None?
Rodney Russell, two two five Steel Street, Debenhart. On the twenty sixth of the tenth, twenty twenty, I asked council who was responsible for the cutting back of vegetation overgrowing Sorrel Street opposite one hundred and eleven and one hundred and thirteen. I believe you were going to try and establish who was responsible. Have you?
I'll take that unnoticed, Mr Russell. Did you have a second?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
Item, oh, in tonight's agenda, item five point one. Page thirty nine. Table two. Number two. Project design, management and administration. Budget forty four thousand one hundred and fifty five dollars. Question, is this a monetary allowance made against the contract to cover the project design, management of the project and the administration of the contract time put in by Debenhart City Council staff?
Um, Mr Russell?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. It is. It's made up of two elements. The design work would already be costs that have already been incurred, and then there'd be an estimate for what the contract administration element would be. That would make up that forty four thousand.
Thank you. And, sorry, did Hollenwood Street reconstruction have such an item?
Through you, Mayor. That's right, all projects have a component for the design and the contract admin.
Thank you. Question, uh, three. The mayor and general manager at each council meeting give a report on what they have done in the previous month. Question, could we have something similar from the councillors on what they have done, seen or heard over the previous month verbally at the meeting? Would be okay.
I'll take that under advisement, Mr Russell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other questions? Mr Martin?
Yeah, Malcolm Gardham, four point one, my dear. I refer to my questions unnoticed in the responses endorsed by the general manager on page ten of the current agenda, and also now endorsed by councillors. Despite the voluminous word count in the responses related to waterfront parkland contracts, it amounts to nothing less than waffle, and fails to directly answer even one question asked. My question one. While confirming that delays had been incurred at the start of both the hotel and the parklands projects, and noting, I did not ask when the council expected or hoped the parklands would be completed for use, the general manager has not provided the adjusted dates for practical completion, being the latest date for completion of the waterfront parkland works as requested. And accordingly, is this because the general manager doesn't know the date, or just refuses to say?
I'll take that unnoticed, Mr Gardham. Could you have a second question?
Madam Chair, that question was unnoticed about the date. You've already had it unnoticed.
I'll take it unnoticed. Thank you, Mr Gardham. Did you have a second question?
I do, thank you very much. Despite the irrelevant advice that council has met its contractual obligation to appoint a superintendent, and that the waterfront parkland contractor was aware of the provision for the hotel contractor's occupation of a major section of that site, clearly being necessary to price the works, and to be agreed in terms of area duration of tender reward, the response, the response does not address my question as the unforeseen delays post-tender reward on the part of the hotel contractor that delay the parkland works, and accordingly, I ask again, will the general manager confirm the existence of a legally binding agreement with the hotel developer and/or Fairbrother for reimbursement of delay costs incurred by Voss resulting from Fairbrother's extended occupation of the area of the new parkland site, and thereby protecting ratepayers from having to fund legitimate delay costs from prolongation of the parkland's contract period? Do we have a legally binding agreement for reimbursement?
I'll ask the general manager if he wants to answer that question.
Thank you.
Even it's prolonged wording, I'm not sure that that's necessary, but I'll allow him the opportunity.
I've tried to explain it exactly what they-
Thank you, Mr Gardham. I'm giving Mr Russell the opportunity to-
No, it's fine.
Yes, through you, Mayor. I'm just putting through that. There's, I think it's been detailed, extensive responses provided to Mr Gardham's questions, so we don't have a lot to add. I think in those responses we do note that the complexities of the crossover of the two sites was known in the tender documents for the waterfront park, and it was also part of the hotel land sale contract. I think that's mentioned in the, in the answer that's been provided in the agenda. The, yes, there's nothing further added.
Thank you. Did you have any-
Madam Chair.
Did you have a third question, Mr Gardham?
I would like to request a supplementary question to that answer.
If that's your third question you asked.
Oh, so I can't, oh, has that gone out of the, the public question time guidelines now?
You have three questions, Mr Gardham.
You should be allowed to have a supplementary question to a answer.
You have three questions, Mr Gardham. I'll just-
Thank you, thank you. I just might say that was waffle, what the general manager just gave me.
I didn't ask for a meeting, Mr Gardham. I asked for a question.
Didn't answer the question. Didn't answer it before, didn't answer it now. Question one, earlier question changes to the elevated walkway, and the general manager advised those changes as being minor in nature, and now advises that the amended foreconstruction drawings cannot be viewed. Accordingly, will the general manager simply confirm the date that the amended elevated walkway drawings were issued for construction?
Nothing further added, Mayor, than what's in the response that's already been provided, Mr Gardham.
Thank you.
So you won't-
Thank you, Mr-
Provide a date that they were issued for construction. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr Davenport?
Thank you. Bob Gollacott, ratepayer, Eleven Cocker Place, Debenhart. Mayor, I refer to the responses per the Debenhart City Council ordinary meeting agenda for this evening's meeting in regard to how much has been expended on legal advice to sort out the problems pertaining to the initial head lease and other leases or matters in regard to the Southern Wilders still retenancy. There still seems to be confusion about the secret presumed significant amount it has cost ratepayers to sort out mismanagement and has requested-
Mr Gollacott, be very careful.
The, the, the schmuzzle. But to clarify once and for all, may I ask the general manager, can you state, the general manager categorically, that you have not during the many secret meetings about the problems-
Mr Gollacott, be very careful on your wording, please.
Well, that's what they were. They were, it's only another word, sorry. Problems of Providore Place made, made the mayor or any of the other councillors aware even approximately how much the, how much it has cost ratepayers.
Mr Gollacott, that question has been asked and answered several times. Did you have another question?
It has been asked, but it has not been answered, Mayor.
Did you have another question?
Sorry, Mayor, it has not been answered, so please don't correct me on that, but it has not been answered correctly.
You have the answer that you're going to get. Did you have a second question, Mr Gollacott?
Mayor, am I led to believe that whilst in closed session deliberations, that you and no other councillors have not asked for or requested what the legal costs have been?
Mr Gollacott, you are well aware that items in closed session are not up for debate at this point. Did you have a third question?
I have a third question, thank you. Well, that was believed, but anyhow. The mayor, could the general manager advise, should a ratepayer ask any councillor if they knew how much exactly or approximately was expended in regards to this issue, and if the council gave an honest answer, would they be in breach of the council's code of conduct and the local government act, simply by saying yes or no?
Yes, they would. Thank you. Did you have a second? Did you, you had your three questions. I've lost count.
Well, the, the other two, the other ones were an a, and the b.
Thank you, Mr Gollacott. You've had your three questions. Thank you. You have the opportunity to rewrite if you wanted your questions answered.
I have got it in writing. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr Mills?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christopher Mills. I live at fifty two Caroline Street. Of course, I am extremely reluctant to be here, but circumstances require me to attend. Please accept my apologies for that. I have three brief questions. One, the certificate of title of the land next to my home is held by Statewide Nominees Proprietary Limited. If I request a copy of the legal documentation authorising Debenhart Council to enter with the purpose of maintaining this land, would the general manager be in a position to release a copy of that document or any relevant documents? That is the question.
We'll take it unnoticed, Mr Mills. I'm not quite sure what you're asking, but I'll ask the general manager to respond. Thank you.
Two. I must thank you, Mayorship, for your suggestion at the last meeting, twenty fifth of January, that an alternative way to seek answers from the current management was to use the RTI Act. However, my request for information using the RTI Act was denied by the general manager by invoking eleven clauses. Yes, eleven clauses of section thirty three of the Act. This justified the refusal to disclose any information, as my request was, quote, contrary to the public interest to disclose the information, end of quote. Given that the general manager has advised the mayor, the councillors, the relevant staff, not to answer any questions from Christopher Mills, and that my RTI application for information was refused, then, oh, you, Mayorship, respectfully, this is not a comment, nor an opinion, nor commentary, but a question. And the question is, could the mayor now suggest another alternative way for me to obtain information? That is the question.
Mr Mills, you do have a lot of appeal to the on which, regarding the general manager's decision, so you do have a, a, a right under the, under the RTI Act.
I'm obliged to your mayorship, thank you.
If you want to comment further, Mr Gardham.
It'll only take three years to get that.
Thank you, Mr Gardham. You don't have the floor. Mr Mills has the floor.
So, my apologies, Madam Chair.
We apologize to Mr Mills, he has-
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, as reasonable people, could I ask you to listen carefully to my final question? At the meeting on the twenty fifth of January, I asked a direct question of Mr Atkins. The minutes will show this as my question one, to which Mr Atkins chose to remain silent. However, the mayor did respond for Mr Atkins. Her response was that the question had been asked and answered. Respectfully, the previous minutes showed that the mayor's response was not quite correct, depending, of course, on the mayor's definition of what constitutes an answer. I submit that reasonable persons would expect a clear answer to a simple question. A clear answer would be yes or no, would it not? The question then is, does Mr Atkins hold a qualification, recognised and approved by the state of Tasmania as an arborist? Yes or no? That is the question.
Thank you, Mr Mills.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. I think in the numerous letters that we've sent, Mr Mills, we have clarified that before, but I can, just to go on the record again, no, I don't have a qualification as an arborist.
Thank you.
I'm exceedingly obliged to you, Mr Atkins, for finally answering that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mills. Any other questions? Item three point three is questions unnoticed from council, councillors and at times where they're running forthcoming. Item three point four, notices of motion, and again, we don't have any on record. Item four is planning authority matters. And I now announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the end of planning and approvals act of nineteen ninety three for the consideration of agenda item four point one. Councils required by regulation act three, the local government meeting procedures regulations of two thousand and fifteen, to deal with items as a planning authority under the law of nineteen ninety three in a sequential manner. The following item is to be dealt with at council meeting in its capacity as a planning authority. And it is item four point one. Thank you, Mr Murphy. Item two oh two oh point oh one, and PA two oh two oh point oh one four three, a combined amendment to resign from the recreational zoning environment management zone to a particular purpose zone, and application for visitor accommodation at seventeen Debenhart Road and Crown North area. The resident negotiation bid from our stop on page seventeen. Do I have a move?
So no.
Council John, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr Perry, thank you. Council John?
Uh, I think this all makes perfect sense. Very happy to look at this and see it for all its merits. It makes sense that if the waterfront function centre is not being utilised as a function centre, there's some wonderful apartments already there. I think it's only going to just add to that area. Wonderful to see this family doing what they do, and they're only been putting their money within their mouth this night. Can't wait to see what they get up to then. It's going to look great. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I concur with Councilor Jarman's comments. Any vibrant development on the waterfront should be welcome and supported by council, providing it meets the planning scheme. And it's important to note that, that the approval for the visitor accommodation units was possible under previous planning scheme, and they're operating under a different one. So, and as Councilor Jarman said, it makes perfect sense for this, this part of Debenhart to, to, to enjoy this type of development, and there should be more of it. So congratulations to, to get scored. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other points? Councilor Jarman, consider it closed. Thank you. I put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mills. Item five, this report, item above point one is a tender report for contract CS double oh nine six. Hold a get these to catch and upgrade. Do I have a move of the recommendation, please?
So moved, Mayor.
Mr Laicock?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Council Laicock.
Nothing to add. It's all been thoroughly gone through by the committee to appoint the tender to CVB contracting.
Thank you. Council Perry?
Uh, yeah, I agree with Councilor Laicock. Another infrastructure project ends coming under budget by a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars, which is also impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Council Laicock, to close?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item five point two is the fifty plus rate, year rate payout parking concession. Do I have a recommendation, please?
So moved.
Mr Hollister, thank you. Do I have a second, then?
I'll second.
Council Millburn, thank you. Council Hollister?
Some support in the recommendation. We might have a few, if not the only, council in the state that actually gives pensioner parking, and costs probably about three percent of rates for everybody else for what we do. Nothing to add to this cost, to the rate, further cost to the ratepayers. I don't think it's justified. So I wish to go ahead.
Thank you. Council Millburn?
Thank you. I concur with Council Hollister over there. It was a really good workshop that we had on this. It was great discussion around the table. We also bought up equity, and if it was equitable to be able to provide this, and we did decide, I think most of us were on the same page, that it wasn't equitable to, to, to give this bonus to a fifty or more year rate payers, along with the magnitude of other reasons. So I agree with this notion. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jarman?
Well, I suppose it's pretty obvious I'm not going to go for this. I guess we've got a look at the fact that we can get rid of-
we can get rid of some debt for people that owe us money, and we forgive them and let them do whatever they like to us. We've got people that have been paying rates to us for over fifty years, and we give them a lunch. That's lovely, it's a very nice thing to do. Don't want us to stop doing that. It's not an invitation thing, it's up to people to approach us to get a gurnsey on the day. And yet, when Mr Jenny came up with this at the AGM, I thought it was a great idea. I certainly thought it was something that we could have looked at seriously. Apparently, it's too hard to ascertain if you've been paying your rates for more than fifty years. I'm pretty sure that if someone came and talked to us, we'd be able to work it out pretty quickly. I don't think there's going to be that many people. I think it's a shame that we couldn't consider it. We used to have parking concessions for self-employed retirees. I was here at council my first year when we got rid of that. So I certainly thought that this was feasible, this was something that we could look at in the light of what the motion meant. I think the workshop was a little bit more convoluted than that. It gave us a lot more statistics that we really didn't need to look at. And at the end of the day, I certainly don't agree with this, and I think it's a shame. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jarman. Any other comments? Councillor Alexia.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I am... Oh, I'll be supporting the statement, councillor Jarman. I think that it's, after having that workshop and having a serious discussion and thinking about things, we got presented quite a few things at the workshop, and I don't think it adds up. The numbers that were brought to us, or how much it's going to cost the rate payers, doesn't add up for me. I think there'd be very few people that will take up this opportunity to take up the fifty plus rate payers free parking. I don't think there'd be any people that would qualify. But, having said that, it'll benefit the community. If there's a minority of the community out there that really would like to see a free parking, I'll fully support it. I think there's probably other ways that we could probably use the multi-story car park, which is not being utilised to its full potential at the moment. There is an opportunity there that we could somehow get more revenue or ask more people to park in that area and get to use that space. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Alexia. And councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm going with the recommendation, and I support councillor Millburn's comments in relation to equity. Look, it's an emotive subject, definitely, I understand that. But the current situation is the pension improvement system that we currently provide is by far the most generous of any subsidies provided by Tasmanian councils that have paid parking. So, in that space, we are doing better work than any other council in Tasmania already. And I think the reasons that we shouldn't support it were laid bare on the night of the workshop, and we should stick with it one bit on that night, except for number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Laycock.
Thank you, Mayor. Totally agree with councillor Perry. If someone does come to us, as councillor Jarman has said, I'm not sure to, we would consider it, but I don't know how we consider it. We don't have records that go back that far. And we need to remember, as it said in the financial implications, that there'll be other user groups that'll come forward, and, you know, what about us? Single mothers, unemployed, there's a lot out there, too many to mention, actually. So I think that, and I have spoken to a lot of pensioners who do have a pensioner parking permit, and they have said to me, this is the best system we've had for many years. So they're the ones using it, not us, and they're happy with it. So a couple of them have said, well, why change it? You said you've done changes before. So I believe that it's the way to go, is to stay as we are. I mean, that money that we would lose will stop a lot of community projects. We have a lot of community groups coming to us every day with their handout, and that's understandable. We want to make it more of a livable city. So I believe in that context, it needs to stay as it is. And in regard to councillor Alexia's comments on getting the multi-story with some more use, I think he will find, and a lot of people will find, that will go ahead much quicker, you know, to be full, in other words, with the completion of the hotel and more visitors coming in in the near future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Holst, a close, again.
Yes, I fully support the recommendation. I can't see why we should subsidise pensioners more than we already do, we're very generous. It's not awkward, many years ago that we actually talked about discontinuing it altogether. It didn't last very long. But we do. Everybody in the community supports pensioners for their parking. And as I believe, it's about three per cent on top of their rates today. It's very generous. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you against?
Aye.
And last, Rashal Panz, those in favour? Councillor Ennis, councillor Millburn, councillor Perry, councillor Watford, councillor Murphy, councillor Laycock, councillor Holst, those against? Councillor Jarman, councillor Alexia, the motion is carried. Thank you. Item five point three is planning authority committee policy. There is a recommendation there on page forty-four, do I have a move, please?
So...
I'll second.
Councillor Perry and councillor John, councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, yeah, I think the draft policy fits, is fit for purpose. The only thing I noted in the policy was, I think in previous committees, the mayor has automatically been the chair of that committee. The new policy, that's not the case. The chair is elected from around the table of six councillors, which is fine. But I guess probably question more, why would that be the case now? Why the change of policy on that? Not that it's an issue for me, I don't really care, but just wondering why we changed the policy on that.
I assume it's based on a genuine policy that we have before.
Yeah. Yeah, through you, Mayor. It was outstanding practice, I guess, that the mayor became the chair of the planning authority. I think previous policy did just outline that it'd be a lanket around the table, but there was that standard convention, so probably appropriate to update it on that basis, instead of the mayor being the chair. Update it on the new basis or the previous? John suggested, maybe just update the recommendation to add the policy adopted to, or will be modified to include that, of course. The mayor as mayor chair. Yeah, that was the will of the member, the second. No, I'm, thank you, it's all happened now, thanks.
I guess, the way I read that, I thought it just depends on, at the time, when elections happen, whether they put their hands up to be on certain committees. I just read that into that, that it might not be the mayor putting their hand up to be on the committee. Is that just a natural thing that the mayor is on that one? I'm going back to when we've done the section twenty-three.
It's been conventioned in the past, but I'm guessing this policy is based on the policy that we had to cover all of our section twenty-three committees.
Yes, yeah.
So if the member in the second, I'm comfortable with that position, which is...
So does it have to be worded that then the mayor is automatically on that committee?
I think the change of word is the mayor becomes chair. Wonderful. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Nothing further on.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Actually, the best time to be in a change. Thank you, councillor Perry, a close.
Consider a close.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item five point four is applied on the science strategy for two thousand seventeen to two thousand and twelve. So, do I have a move, please?
So moved.
Councillor Alexia, councillor Jarman, councillor Alexia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a pretty significant matter for the council in the region of Devonport and Tasmania. I noticed that listed in action seven is some work to be done in East Devonport, and what concerns me is the Frey terminal departure route. And I'm hoping, since I've been on council, I've seen nothing being achieved during my time at council, but action seven, it's listed in there as one of the high priorities that we need to address. And I'm hoping that in the near future, we can get something achieved for that.
I think most of us are hoping that there'll be some involvement on that, similar rather than that. Councillor Alexia, thank you. Councillor Jarman.
Thank you. Yes, I do have a question in relation to action six, I guess, before action seven. Through you, Madam Chair, she's just scurving on the sheet. Hold on. Confirm preferred location, this is on page forty-seven. Preferred location for major city entrance market and developed concept planes. So, how far along are we with that? Because obviously, I've been asking for a while, but we were going to put anything on the overpasses, one at the dome and the one at the turn off to the airport, over the highway.
Through you, Mayor. So the locations, particularly the entrance to Devonport CBD, will be ready to change, and also East Devonport have been included in the state vehicle three-point project. So we are awaiting the funding to be made available to implement that project. And the, there's two other locations which have been identified for potential sites as well on the western side of Devonport. So until there's a start date for the state vehicle three-point project in terms of funding, we won't be progressing those other locations. But there are concept designs included in the state vehicle three-point project for those sites.
I assume, is that coming back to a workshop at some stage? Excellent. And yes, I certainly always make sure that one day we're going to say, welcome to Devonport, something specific, and that would be really good, because we just don't seem to be very good at that. So I'm sure that this whole, the reason we've got this strategy now is in place so that we can do it and do it better, and certainly do it at the strategic points that we've got to do it. I understand, obviously, there might be big changes happening over East Devonport. We've got to wait for that to happen, just need to push the state government to make some decisions and see that that actually takes place sooner rather than later. So obviously, I suppose this will be in place, this will be ready to go as soon as they give us the dollarhead over there and everything's finished, I guess. That's where we're at, just waiting.
That's right. So through you, Mayor. So we, the concept design information, the concept design information's with the federal government at the moment, waiting for funding to be approved. The locations and the preliminary design work's been completed.
Okay, thank you. Nothing better.
Councillor Ennis.
I agree with councillor Alexia. I think we're all busting for something to come about to make the entrance a lot better. So hopefully, this is going to happen sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Oh, that's something positive. I think the wraparound signage that we have around some of our precincts really light up and show, sort of direct the attention and produce that area as well. So especially around the bluff area and the Wookin Wells picture that is in the, not Wookin, sorry, the Jeffries. Jerry's, thank you. They're just maybe something, should be connected, so thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia, to close.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The previous councillors here on their comments, feedback, it's great. Listen, Furtet, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six is information, six point one is workshops and breakings since our last council meeting, and that was a great relationship.
You do, ma'am, so moved.
Councillor Laycock, thank you, second there.
Second there.
Councillor Alexia, thank you. Any comments, councillor Laycock?
Nothing to add apart from when the public gathering are, they are very in-depth, very, very good workshops and breakings, thank you.
Councillor Alexia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I agree as well. It was interesting to have Inspector Jones, because many of it's come along. It's the first time I've been on council to have an inspector come along and raise a few questions and he answered them quite well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
I'd just like to say the libraries Tasmania update was excellent. And if you haven't been and had a look at the facilities that they offer and the services they provide, you should do.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Laycock, to close.
Consider a close.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point two is the mayor's monthly report. Do I have a move, please?
So moved.
Councillor Alexia, second there. Second, councillor Millburn, thank you. Councillor Alexia.
Plenty of discussions there, Madam Mayor, because there's been fairly few this month, which is mainly, and... Hold on.
Thank you, councillor Millburn.
Nothing better.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Councillor Alexia, to close.
Consider a close.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point three is the general manager's report for this month. Do I have a move, please?
So moved.
Councillor Perry, thank you. Second there.
Second there.
Councillor Alexia, thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, lots of good work. I mean, there were the general manager, I just had a question on item two point two. Do you think that the business operator, and if they want to inspect the site that they propose for the development, is it appropriate to give further advice on that issue yet, or is it a little bit early?
Through you, Mayor.
It's probably a little bit early. I hope that, thank you. Keep up the good work, thank you.
Councillor Alexia.
Lovely Furtet.
Thank you. Councillor Holst.
The veteran state president on the progress of the state. Move oil. Any further on that?
We just met, just pressed on, we had a few obvious things that worked luckily, and the variable way forward as far as getting ready for them to actually apply the funding. They hadn't actually applied them yet, so there was some conversations around that, and some work that has to be done to do. So it was really positive, but there's some work that I still have to do. But so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Perry, it close.
Consider a close.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point four is the development and health services report. Do I have a move on recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councillor Perry, thank you. Second there.
Through you.
Councillor Holst, thank you. Councillor Perry.
Some good information there. Thank you to Miss Lawson, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holst.
Nothing further to add.
Any comments, questions? Councillor Perry, a close.
Consider a close.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point five is the infrastructure and wood street project. Do I have a move, please?
So moved.
Councillor Perry, thank you. Do I have a second there?
Second there.
Councillor Alexia, thank you. Councillor Perry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Lots of good projects going on in the city to make it a better place. And I actually had a reason to speak to someone that hadn't been here for about ten years on the weekend, and they were doing a bit of driving around, and they couldn't believe how much Devonport has changed for the better. And it sort of fed into the science strategy as well. They even got to the point that they said the signs are really good, informative, and they look cool. So that's really good feedback from someone that hasn't been here for ten years. So again, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia.
Nothing further to add, thanks, Madam.
Any comments, questions? Councillor Perry, a close.
Consider a close.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item seven is section twenty-three committees, and seven point one is the reported annual authority meeting later of the Act of February. Do I have a move, please? Wow. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Alexia. Do I have a move, please?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, councillor Perry, councillor Millburn. Councillor Perry.
Yeah, just an accurate reflection of the events that are happening, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Millburn. Nothing better, thank you. Any comments, questions?